Welcome everyone to Monday, September 26th, City Council Meeting. If we can have a roll call to establish quorum, please ma'am.
Terry McLung.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Kristi Kendrick.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
We have six.
All right, if we may stand, pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. I have one item under new business, it's a police grant, a resolution for a grant to the police, so police grant application. Is there anything else from anybody? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Am favor, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
And so moved. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. Our next deal is under commissions, we have a new application from CAPC for Damon Henke. Henke. Terry.
I served on the CAPC in the last-
You need to get a motion.
Okay, well then we will discuss, are we going to be able to discuss?
If you make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Damon Henke to the CAPC.
Second.
Point of order.
All right.
It's the same motion that was made a month ago and we're still in the same session. Not appropriate.
Well, in my opinion, this is a new application and it can be submitted. Now, that can be overruled by the council, but it's my judgment that this is a new application, he submitted a new application, went before the CAPC, under a new application and they're resubmitting it to us as a new application. I'm not sure, have to ask our city attorney if that's, if that's the right direction.
I believe you're correct, ma'am.
Is that the limit, two times?
We don't have any qualification, one time or the other, it is.
I'm looking at city attorney. It seems to me that it can only be put before CAPC a second time and then it's dead for a year.
As far as the appointment of members, I don't know of a restriction that says how often.
Okay, I think there's a-
There may be one, but I'd have to look.
We haven't found one that says that.
It's sworn that was part of it when we made that up.
James.
The CAPC functions under a distinct legislation that is unlike no other commission that the city has. The state has enabled the CAPC commissioners to appoint who they want to succeed to various positions. No other commission in the city has that authority. The CAPC is unique in that situation, so I would hope that council would pay close attention that the CAPC as a body went to the extraordinary lengths to reappoint Mr. Henke to this commission, and it is on that commission that Mr. Henke will sit, and that's a distinct difference from all the other commissioners, commissions that the city has.
If Mr. McLung will withdraw his motion, I am prepared to make a motion that we confirm CAPC's nomination of Mr. Henke.
Oh, withdraw.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. I am going to make a motion that the council confirm the CAPC nomination of Damon Henke.
Second.
David.
I had the opportunity today to talk to Damon Henke, he called me about 11 o'clock, we had a very nice conversation, and in that conversation, I talked about my concerns that I have with some prior behavior and some issues that have caused me to vote in the negative against him, and those concerns don't have really anything to do with the discussion that Mickey had of the Plasch and Play issue at all, I want to be very clear about that, very distinctly different. My concern rises because of when Mr. Henke took over his position at the Chamber, and he was the acting director for a while. At the very beginning, Mike Bishop was terminated for a position statement in the heat of nondiscrimination ordinance 2223, and that position statement was very offensive and very divisive coming from organization of the Chamber, it is its private organization, I totally understand that and they have a right to it, but a position statement is a roadmap for an organization, it's similar to their mission, vision, and values, it stands as a very substantial document. When Mr. Bishop left that organization, that position statement stayed in effect and it continued in effect to this day, it's never been rescinded, so while Mr. Henke was there and operating as the director, nobody ever brought it up and have brought it up to date. But my concern comes from some lodging people during Mr. Henke's reign there, who approached them about the Chamber's website, and on that website, when you go to Google search and put in Eureka Springs Chamber of Commerce, it pops up and then there's a place you can link to that says stay at. When you click on that, you get a screen that pops up that has Ozark Mountain Valley Lodging on the button. When you click on that, it pops up to Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals, and at the time when you pushed on search rentals, the first businesses that popped up were all of Mr. Henke's. Now that has since changed and there's 52 of them on there, but nonetheless, they're still on here. Now I did ask Mr. Henke, from a business standpoint, everybody would love to have first-place internet, search engines and all for your business, that's a good business option. However, when you're serving on the Chamber and you're promoting your business before everybody else that's a Chamber member as far as lodging and everything, I think you have an ethical issue. So I have a real concern, concern with that at the time, so when this lodging person went down to discuss it, a little girl at the desk, this person talked to them and told them what they were there to see Damon, he wasn't there and everything, and she asked him very clearly, the person that was there, not to confront Damon about it because he has a temper. Now, that has nothing to do with the reason-
Point of order, point of order here.
I am finishing my discussion.
I have a point of order, this is a nomination for the CAPC-
I'm getting there.
And I don't know what past history at the Chamber and hearsay and innuendo from second and third parties has any bearing on his performance on the CAPC.
That's not hearsay or innuendo.
That's fact.
It has to do with ethics and self-dealing, self-promotion over the businesses in the city in this town, so it's very clearly-
With all due respects to my colleague, that's an assessment on his part and is not a fact.
No, it is a fact.
Fair.
Chad, the Chair of the Sales of the Chamber then told the person, this is the fifth or sixth time that they had to correct Damon for misusing his role and his link for the offsite. My problem is, and has been, when we had the reconsideration, we all sat here and nobody wanted to reconsider, Damon stood up, talked to us about what was going on with all of his businesses and everything, never once mentioned that his servant on the CAPC, he was there for tourism, lodging, he was there for the city, he was there to promote anything, he only discussed his businesses. I see a trend with self-promotion over that of what a commissioner would need to be, and that's where you set your business, your self-interests aside, and you put forth the city. That is my point.
May I speak in favor of my motion, please? Previously, I was concerned about renewing the term of the commissioner when other potential nominees were interested in the position. However, one of those potential nominees has withdrawn his name and I learned that Mr. Henke has not served a full four-year term, but has only been on the CAPC for two and a half years. I was also very hesitant to renew the term of a seated CAPC commissioner because the CAPC has shown, I think, deplorable support for the odd. I recently attended the Brubeck concert because I heard about it in the council meeting from Mr. McLung. I might have seen one ad in the newspaper, at dinner beforehand, two servers did not know what was happening at the odd and did not even know about the Jazz Fest. 110 people attended the Brubeck concert, and I blamed the CAPC for the horrendous attendance. In 2007, the retail portion of the CAPC tax was $277,000, and during various incarnation or versions of the CAPC reincarnation that year, turning the odd over to the city and doing away with the retail portion of the tax was discussed. The odd was not turned over to the city, but the retail portion of the tax was done away with and was replaced by an increase in the CAPC tax from 2% to 3%, presumably allowing the CAPC to continue its support for the odd. Since 2007, I have been to some great concerts in the odd, but there haven't been very many in the last couple of years. In 2007, the CAPC spent $260,000 on the odd. In 2016, it has budgeted 111. The CAPC must commit to promote the odd if the 1% tax passes, and they must agree to spend as much on the odd as it has in the past, and I'd rather see the 2007 support than the current support. I think the odd needs regular programming, not necessarily big shows like Ray Charles, but I think the shows like Dr. John, the Brubeck Brothers, and Ellison Delphio Marcellus have been great. Otherwise, I predict that there will be a movement to repeal 1% of the CAPC tax. Now I have reason to believe that Mr. Henke will support the odd, and therefore I support the confirmation of the CAPC's nomination of Damon Henke.
I'd just like to ask him a question if I could. So, are you saying that filling out a new application form constitutes a new application?
As I understand it, he's been through the process of the CAP, see, looking at his and sending it up again, not just filling out a piece of paper.
But the motion here at this table is to appoint Mr. Henke to this seat, which was already done a month ago.
Well, and as I appreciated, if I make that motion as a dissenter-
But that's too late for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I haven't, you know, I just don't see how that, I would see, you know, in some of our code, we have restrictions where you cannot do something for a year, why couldn't a person just fill out a new application form? And that would be-
Many of those things do have a restriction. I feel like no restriction on this appointment, and it is not normal in the code the way the CAPC does this. I mean, theirs here is a completely different way of appointing than any of the other commissions because they, as was mentioned earlier, they do their own selection of part of their members. The Parks doesn't select their own members, the Hospital Commission doesn't select their own members, and they've been through the process now, as I understand it, completely twice for Mr. Henke, and twice they've come back with him being their best pick.
Mr. McLung.
You know, I've sat on that commission with Damon since he was appointed and a half years ago, and elected, appointed, whatever it was, and, and he's highly involved, he's involved in the city in many different aspects, in the tourist industry, he works very hard at it, he's knowledgeable in the computer end of it, he's a forward thinker, he asks a lot of questions, you know, may not get everything right, but none of us do, but he's always willing, you know, to step out there and, and to take a chance and to try something different, something new, and, and I think he's, he's a good working part of the CAPC commission as it exists today, and, and I think that's why he was re-approved by the CAPC because he is just that.
Mickey.
We as councilmen have a number one specific job that we take an oath to do, which is to serve and protect our people, our citizens, in every way, shape, and possible that we can. Our town is based strictly on tourism, therefore it is our duty to make sure tourism stays viable because that is what supports and makes financially feasible our local citizenry. When there are a minimum of six different incidents causing rumors, allegations, whatever you want to call it, and I'm not going to be more specific than that, going around in regards to a city official or what may become a city official, that will severely cause problems with tourism, which will severely cause problems for our citizens, and this is one of three reasons that I have for not appointing because these rumors and allegations are horrific, which is why I will not go into them. Damon and I had quite a chat on the phone today also, he brought forth a couple of incidents on his own, I never said a word, but he brought up something and that made it very much a major concern for me, because he knew exactly, or he thought he knew exactly what I was referring to, I was referring to something else different, but for him to sit there and voluntarily bring up, well, she says, he says, and yada, yada, I'm sorry, this is going to hurt tourism, it's going to hurt our people, we don't need that, especially when there are other people, and therefore, that's my position and my wherefores.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, I find it unfortunate that council members would sow the seeds of speculation, innuendo, and hearsay when we're supposed to be dealing with the facts here. I've sat with Mr. Henke for two and a half years on the commission, I can tell you that he's a conscientious, intelligent member who's more in tune with where we are heading as a commission than I have been in the past serving as a commission member. I rely on people who have an expertise in the new technologies that are bringing people to our door. I can only say that this year, up to date, we are 11 and a half percent up, we probably have the largest rate of increase of any CAPC in the state, and that is the work of the commission that has proven itself to be effective and Mr. Henke to be an integral part of that. So I would hope that this commission would deal with the facts here. I hope this council would respect the opinions and the expertise of the City Advertising and Promotion Commission to understand their wants and needs. I find it unfortunate that Mr. McLung and I get very few questions from the council as to the state of the CAPC, yet for some reason, there's all of this hearsay and innuendo floating around in the community that they're unwilling to bring up at the table and discuss. So as long as we're dealing with the facts, in the last four years, we've had roughly an eight to nine percent year-over-year increase of the CAPC. Yes, Ms. Kendricks, in the past, the CAPC made a conscientious decision not to get into the business of promoting acts in the auditorium because a number of acts lost upwards of $25,000 to $35,000 per act. We felt it more incumbent on the CAPC to do the advertising and promotion, and since 2012, we've done quite well. Unfortunately, 2007, 2008 was the year that the Great Recession started, so we took some pretty considerable hits in this community during the recession, unfortunately, when you watch TV, what was the first thing people said? Well, the recessions company, guess I'll stop eating out for dinner. Well, they stopped doing a lot of things that we do as a community because we provide the non-necessities of life, although I would like to think that a vacation is a necessity. Some people, particularly in a recession of that magnitude, quit coming to Eureka Springs, and our revenues are down 2%, 3% year-over-year. We've got a great run going and I think Mr. Henke has been an integral part of that. So I would hope that council would recognize the authority of the CAPC because for a second time, that organization has decided that Mr. Henke was such a part that the majority of us voted again to have his nomination come before this council for your approval, and I would hope that given everything that the CAPC has accomplished and the fact that Mr. Mitchell has asked for a five- to 10-year plan, and one of the first things we were discussing at, at the commission was converting the $110,000 that the A&amp;P spends on the auditorium every year to create a fund from which we will book acts in the auditorium to the, so we'll in essence have a pool of $110,000 for the year. If we prove effective and profit-wise, we have more events in the auditorium. If we don't, well, we may have fewer shows than we anticipate, but we have had somewhat of a sea change at the commission, and the discussion is now into converting the A&amp;P's $110,000 commitment to the auditorium to providing acts in the auditorium. So we're not bound by the past, yes, we do learn from the past and the future is what we make of it, but once again, I would hope that the council would abide by the wishes of one of their commissions.
Then let's keep fighting, no?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes. Speaking of the facts, Mr. DeVito, that's a good point. I did a Freedom of Information Act to pick up the ballots for the CAPC commission for the 810 and the other one, and surprise, the 810 meeting, when the first time Mr. Damon came up, he had four votes for, Susan Harmon got two, you should be familiar with one of the no votes, Mr. DeVito. Likewise, on the second time, 914, Damon Henke, four votes, which by the way, he voted for himself, Bobby Foster got three. So based on the facts, I don't think that you will find that the CAPC is, as a total group, as enamored with the nomination as you make it out. And just to clarify something, back in '07, when you mentioned about the CAPC as a new CAPC, there was a letter written on December 18th, '07 to the Honorable Brian B. King that was responded to by Dustin McDaniel, the Attorney General. There was five, six questions, seven, that were posed. Question number four that was posed at the time was, surprisingly, besides the fact that you were wanting to change the act that the commission was under so that you could change the percentage from 2% to 3%, and also to change the, who was, the money was collected from, which made sense, it matched up better, somebody at that particular point in time came up with the most interesting question here that seemed to sneak through. "Is it against the law to alter the appointment process and put all appointment approvals in the hands of the sitting commissioners and not, and not appointed by the mayor or ratified by city council?" The Attorney General said, "With respect to question four, in my opinion, if the city organizes an A&amp;P commission pursuant to ACA 2675 605," which by the way, you are organized under, "the statute requires that appointment power to be vested in the A&amp;P commission with the approval of the nominations placed in the government body of the municipality." So the council still does have an active point in appointing a commissioner to the CAPC, and it is not the exclusive domain of the CAPC to self-promote themselves, to set themselves up separate from the city council or the city government, and I find it to be slightly arrogant to do that. Therefore, I make a motion to postpone indefinitely, to postpone indefinitely the nomination of Damon Henke to the CAPC.
Second.
We've already got a motion on the floor. Yeah, the motion to defer table supersede those other motions.
And there was no second.
What?
And there was no second.
There was a second. Mickey seconded it.
Thank you, I did both.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand.
There's a movement to postpone.
Movement to defer, postpone, supersede the other motions.
To table to the next meeting.
Oh, I see, indefinitely.
Don't we-
No.
Don't we have to vote on that?
Yes.
I've got a question here.
We do.
To say to the attorney, if it postpones indefinitely, is that a motion, a legitimate motion that supersedes the other motions?
No.
I think it needs a time period.
Need a time period?
I amend my, I make a motion to amend, I'll amend my motion. I'll amend it to January of 27, January of 2018.
Go for seven.
Seventeen, 2017.
I'll second the change.
All right, I think I can accept that motion, the city attorney concurs. Motion on the table is that this will be tabled until January-
No discussion?
Well, the motion's been made, I don't know if there's discussion, when you table a motion, it's brought up to a vote, no discussion on the motion, it's tabled.
Wait a minute, I need an explanation.
Mr.-
I need an explanation.
I think according to Robert Rose of Orders, there's no, it supersedes all other motions.
Okay, then let's make it perfectly clear here that, that if, that is the case, that if that is the case, then the seat stays vacant.
The seat stays vacant.
And so then it is continued to be occupied by the person that held that seat.
Let me ask, is there discussion on this?
As far as I'm aware, there is not really a discussion, no.
Okay, you are correct, Mr. McLung, he will stay in that seat until it's, until January, whatever the date was, in 2017. He will stay in that seat until it's, until January, whatever the date was, in 2017. He will stay in that seat. And what act is that?
Ex facto.
De facto.
Which gives him, de facto, which gives him all the privileges of voting and sitting there.
Correct.
Which he should be identified, though, as de facto, not as a question.
It doesn't matter. I mean, he can still vote. The only thing is, he can't be paid.
Well, correct. I'm sure he'll be upset about that.
Yeah, I'm sure. That's the only difference. All right, so there's a motion, Mr. McClung, and it's a legitimate motion that's going to be tabled until January. The first, what was the date?
January 9.
January 9, 2017?
Yeah.
What'd you have?
January 2017. And if Mickey's going to modify David's motion, doesn't he need to weigh in on it?
Wait, don't we have our, when we have our first meeting?
We need to have, set a date in January.
Eighteen.
No.
I went to seventeen.
It was initially eighteen.
And then he changed it to seventeen.
Yeah.
Or whatever our meeting date is.
It's January 17, but are we meeting the first or the second Tuesday, or the second Monday?
Second Monday.
Okay, that would be the ninth.
Mr. Mitchell? Which date did you have? I'm sorry.
I just said January 17, so I would assume it'd be the first meeting of 17, for further clarification.
There'll be a second term, or a new term of council at that time. It will expire at midnight, January 1st, or December 31st.
Okay. Well, then.
You don't carry.
Kind of makes it moot, doesn't it, because we don't meet until the ninth?
New council will go to address it.
Right.
Maybe same six, but it'll be a council term.
Okay. Could you repeat the motion?
Well.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mitchell made a motion to postpone the decision until January 2017, and Ms. Snyder seconded it.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, think I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yeah, I'm opposed.
How many opposed?
Three.
I'm opposed.
All right, so Terry, James, and Christie were the opposition.
Actually, it needs to be a roll call vote, anyway.
All right. Go ahead and roll call.
Good point.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Three-three.
I vote yes.
Three-three. Postponed until January 2017.
All right. Mr. Henke, public comments. Been cussed and discussed, and now it's time. We have a few minutes here.
Little did I know that I was going to be addressing everyone after that. I suppose a couple of quick points. Obviously, I'm Damon Henke. I have Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals and numerous other business interests in town. But we will talk about my CAPC position briefly. Obviously, I've been there two and a half years and have enjoyed serving, and will continue to be there, and we'll get some shows in the odd. We're making a lot of headway. We've got new blood on the commission, so it's fun and entertaining. Wednesday, obviously, we're going to have our report from our consultant, so we're looking toward good things on the CAPC Commission. A couple of things that I just wanted to comment on, I never was reprimanded, or were there any comments made to me from the Chair of the Chamber, namely Kathy Hanley, and no comments as my misused authority. I'm not for sure. I'd be happy to straighten that out with Kathy Hanley, but there was never any trouble that I was in. They did ask that I add my company name to that specific ad that David referenced so that it was more clear that that was specifically for Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals. Now, speaking of my representation of tourism, I have three destination marketing websites, myself, Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals, Beaver Lake Vacations, and InEurekaSprings.com to try and represent the city. So basically, this is 52 lodgings. I represent, just to name some that you'll recognize, Texaco Bungalow, Livingston Junction Caboose's, Statue Road Inn, Rosanna Cottage, Bella Paradiso, Sparky's Guest House, and some of those people that you'll recognize are Kamal Atwell, Ken Riley, Pat Fitzsimmons, Ruth Hagar, Mark Hicks just bought Bridgford House. I'm going to team up and help him promote that. So when you say I'm promoting myself, I'm really promoting several interests in town. And that position, that specific ad that he's talking about on the Chamber's website, was a vacant position that just said Chamber of Commerce. So I'm asking, at the time, you couldn't even sell anything at the Chamber of Commerce. You couldn't even hardly keep your membership when I stepped into the interim director role. So I was certainly willing to buy an ad to try and help out the Chamber. And those are still available. If David would like to purchase that ad position from me, I will sell him that ad, but I have trouble believing that he'll even have an ad on the Chamber of Commerce. But certainly, I'm not attached to this. It was a service-oriented deal. I represent a lot more than myself, and certainly am excited to have my commission position and move that forward for the overall good of the city and the economic development of the city, too. American attest that I've been to every econ, maybe not every, but nearly every economic development meeting that we've had. I'm very in tune with what's going on in this city. Anyway, I appreciate your time and your diligence on this, and thank you for serving in your seats.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business, that ends our public comments. Next order of business, a new business update on the CAPC plans. Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Snyder, I think we kind of started to get into a little bit of it, so motion to discuss.
Second. There, let me find it right here. I guess I would like to see or ask one of our two representatives from the CAPC if that timeline that was requested for this meeting happened to be available from the CAPC to go along with the diligence that the mayor and his administrative assistant have put forth in communicating to the voting public of this town, the importance of the 1% tax, based on the fact that there is a significant number, whether some people agree with it or not, of people who are not happy with the CAPC and its relationship with the auditorium. So I'd like to ask one of the two folks here, and then I want to follow up from that conversation that they have, if that plan happens to be ready.
Yes, sir. Well, I stated when this 11th hour request was made, that we would not be able to have that available tonight. We just met last week, and that was the first time the commissioners knew that there was a request. For a five- or 10-year plan, which is not something you scratch on the back of a cocktail napkin in the course of an evening over dinner. So it's going to take a little bit of time to formulate this five-to-10-year plan. We're in the presence of, we're going through a reevaluation of the CAPC top to bottom. These things were already in motion. We're trying to fulfill the request of Mr. Mitchell. As I stated, when he made that request, it would not be available tonight. It is not available tonight. We are working on it, and we will have it available as soon as we can. Initially, as I stated earlier, the commission seems to be amenable to converting the $110,000 investment in the auditorium if the sales tax passes to begin promoting events in the Beyond that, there's multiple infrastructure needs for the auditorium that will be addressed with that money. There's also the topic of setting up an auditorium commission. These will all be parts of a five- and 10-year plan, but it will take us time as a, we're going to have a workshop on this, and we will get this to council as soon as we can.
I want to follow up to my, to that comment. I'll go over with you, Ms. Kendrick. I want to follow up to that because I had wanted to finish. Lovely County Citizen quote, "Mr. DeVito said there were two CAPCs, one before 2007 and one after that year. After he said that, the city adopted a different law governing the CAPC. In fact, that letter from the Attorney General that I just wrote, the only thing he did was change the Arkansas statute that governed the CAPC, and all they did was change the tax and what went on." So in essence, based on the Arkansas statute, "All revenues credited to the Advertising and Promotion Fund pursuant to this article shall be used for advertising and promoting the city and its environs and/or for the construction, reconstruction, extension, equipment improvement, maintenance, repair, and operation of a convention center." You're still obligated to the convention center. And the question that the citizens have, I'm going to keep talking because I have the floor, thank you, is the fact that the CAPC is not felt to have met its obligation. And the current state of the auditorium, the current shows that take place there, and everything else that's going on, is a direct relationship from the lack of attention and our monetary support from the CAPC to the auditorium over multiple years. And these citizens are not happy. And as Ms. Kendrick alluded to a while ago, I'm going to do a Paul Harvey and tell you the rest of the story because I'm pretty sure some of you don't believe that there's a lot of folks out there that are not very happy with this, and these people are voters. And for one, I do not want to see that 1% tax fail. That is beyond doubt one of the most important things for this city and the infrastructure that has happened in a long, long time, and it is vital for this city. And I would hate to think that citizens are going to come along and vote because they're pissed off about the auditorium and the CAPC and vote against that tax. So all we asked for was a plan from the CAPC to go with the timeline that was already laid out. And what do we get? Typical the CAPC again. Oh, let's just put it on the back burner. We got other things going on. And here you go, you bump it down the line again. And so obviously, that trend that you have with the auditorium is continuing along. It hasn't really changed. But there is a movement out there, and it is a strong movement, that some people, if they're going to go ahead and bite the bullet and vote for the tax, they're going to turn right around, get a petition, ask to put it on the ballot, and take 1% away from the CAPC. And right now, that's an option, and it's gaining steam. So I don't understand where you're at. I know you got this report coming in, this Johansson report, and I'm sure that, obviously, the way everybody's acting about it, it bothers you. I also understand, I watched.
Mr. Mitchell, we're going to keep it on the auditorium.
Keep it on the auditorium.
The CAPC and the plans on the auditorium, that's the motion.
Mm-hmm. I thought I was.
All right. I'm sorry to disrupt.
I've lost my train of thought. Thank you. I'll stop.
Ms. Kendrick, you had your hand up?
Yes, I am curi, I understand. We all went through the recession, and I understand that the odd necessity took a hit like everything else did. I still do not understand why the CAPC's investment in the odd has dropped from, I believe it was $277, down to, it was, I'm sorry, $260,000 in 2007 to $111 this year.
Mr. DeVito?
I would really like to go back and look at those numbers from 2007. I can barely remember what I had for lunch yesterday, and this is, I'd like to know how those numbers were broken down. Tonight's not the place to do it, but an accounting of that 200 and some thousand dollars would be interesting to see how it broke out, whether or not it had to do with shows that were presented at a certain time, was that, you know, the cost of performers added in? Because I do know sometime during that period, there were some large shows that were going on in the auditorium. So how that accounting was broken out, I would like to know. The auditorium's always been a hot potato for the city. The CAPC never said, "Please, let us handle the auditorium." No. In essence, what happened was, the city said, "Here, you take it." So we took it, and we did the best we could with it, and we made a decision to spend our money on advertising and promotion. And I must say that we have done quite well fulfilling that obligation. As I say, the last four years, now that we're out of the recession, we're growing at an average of 9%. We have one of the, one of the best rates of growth in the state, and that reflects across the economy. And there's a direct correlation between the A&amp;P's ability to advertise and general revenues for the city. There's a direct link. As our revenues at the A&amp;P go up, the revenues at the city go up. So we're the advertising agency for this, and I hate to use the word business, but occasionally, the city needs to operate like a business. We advertise for the city. We're the only one that brings people to town, that fills the coffers of this city. And I think we're doing a damn good job of it. Now, we're going to be tasked with doing a different task. So we're trying to shift gears right in the middle. If this, we've known this 1% sales tax was going to be going along all this time, but here, six weeks out, suddenly, we're throwing this curveball because certain people in the community. Well, I've got a lot of people in the community that want to see more things going on at the auditorium, and that's what we're trying to fulfill. So even before Mr. Mitchell brought this up, there were members of the CAPC that are moving in that direction. We have new, younger people on the commission who want to see more things, more events in the community. The only way this community is going to have more events is by having more shows in the auditorium, because putting on a festival is a Herculean task. And with the small staff that we have at the CAPC, they can't be responsible for putting on the festivals. That has to be a volunteer effort in this community, aided by the CAPC's ability to advertise and promote that. So reasonably thinking about the only way we can have more things going on in this community is by booking things into the auditorium. That takes less manpower, and now that we have an opportunity, when this sales tax pass, that we will take that route and present more events in the auditorium.
Mr. McClung?
I don't always agree with Mr. DeVito, but in this instance, I do. He's.
September 26.
He's right on. And the auditorium has been a point of contention for the 40 years I've been here, you know, with the CAPC, and it's been that tug-of-war of who's in charge and who's not, and who's to run it, and who's going to pay for this, and who's going to clean the bathrooms, and I mean, it's just gone on and on and on. We have added this to the, to the, to the, to the vote that's going before the public as a quarter cent sales tax to finally give it the revenue stream it deserves, and so it can be brought up to speed. And yeah, and what he's talking about, you know, the commitment of the CAPC to try and funnel that money towards shows, you bet. Yeah, I remember when I was on the council in 2005, I believe it was, that I made some comments about the CAPC being that unwanted, or not the CAPC, but the auditorium as that unwanted bastard child that nobody wanted to pay for, but everybody thinks that, you know, it should succeed. And it's unfortunate that it has that moniker, but it is, in a way, an albatross to the city. It's something that we have that we're responsible for, and we have to take care of it. So it's the only way I know how to, to get this done, is with this tax and provide the revenue to keep it a viable location. It needs a lot of work done to it now, as we've discussed. When the parking lot was dug up and the creek was fixed, you and I crawled under there, along with many others, and the piers that supported are scalded severely. They need to be repaired. The tuck work, on the mortar, up on the stone, up on the top, especially on the backside, is indeed of being done. There's so much, and the CAPC could file everything that it has into it if you wanted it to. it to. I mean, if that's truly the way it was earmarked, but it can't be done. It just can't be done. This tax, structured the way it is, and will give it the revenue stream that it needs to keep it a viable product for Eureka Springs.
Bob?
I just wanna ask a question, clarification about the $110,000. Does that include the salary for the sound person?
Yes.
So, but wasn't, I've always heard, it seems like in the discussion of the tax and everything, CAPC was gonna continue to pay his salary.
Yeah, well, we would. I mean, I think that we would. I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't.
How can you pay his salary and give $110,000 to Axe if it's the same $110,000?
Well, we have an increase of $80,000 so far this year, so that more than covers his salary.
So when you spend the $110,000 on the auditorium, you're still gonna fund the sound person separately?
We can't speak without the approval of the entire commission.
We have, we've not had a formal meeting on anything, Bob. We've not even had a chance to have a workshop yet.
Well, I'm just concerned you're spending the same amount of money two different ways.
You know, that will have to come out when we're able to meet on it and determine it. I can't say specifically, I can't. But at least still, $110,000 involvement, yes.
Chris Snyder?
I'll do ramp up.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. We need the 1% tax, we absolutely need it. But what I think was missing from the two of yours' conversation was the fact that there's still a significant number of voters in this town that don't necessarily agree with wanting to do the 1% tax. And all we asked it to do was come up with a plan to go after, and to show, and to demonstrate, much like the chief financial officer came up with an idea to control the money when it comes out, that what the CAPC would step up to the plate and do, put it in writing, lay it out, show the public, and do it. And by the way, you know, early voting, I don't know when early voting starts, and I think the election is, what, November 8th? So time is of the essence. And if the mayor and everybody has out a packet of information, and they're getting it to the radio stations, doing interviews and everything, it'd be nice to have on there that the CAPC has stepped up, and this is what they're going to do, and their obligation to the auditorium, because it's been en statut all this time, and so, but we're still arguing about it, and it's still not exactly clear, and everybody has different opinions, so why not lay it out? Time is of the essence, period.
I think when gambling comes into a community, they always say, okay, the proceeds from the gambling is gonna go to education. And it does, it's great. But what often happens is the other sources that were devoted to education are withdrawn. And I think that is our concern here, is that the odd, yet even this tax would provide even more resources to the odd.
James?
We'll understand that that money is going to the auditorium and not to the CAPC.
I do understand that. I just wanna make sure that the CAPC will continue to support the odd at the same level, so that the odd will have even more in the way of assets.
Well, I can ensure you that the CAPC will continue to support the auditorium, but also understand that the recommendation from the auditorium committee twice has been that we form an auditorium commission to disperse those funds. And I think the community would be much more amenable to having the citizens of this community sitting on a commission overseeing the dispersment of those funds. And that's the direction I personally want to go.
I am not arguing with you. I am certainly not recommending that the 25% of the 1% go to the CAPC.
Okay. Mr. McLeod?
In this little packet that has been prepared by your office, this is why I include the auditorium. The community has asked for changes, and in response to community auditorium committee was established by the mayor last year with the purpose of developing a plan and budget to present to the city council. City council approved the plan, budget, and request to create an independent community commission to take over all management, maintenance, and operation responsibilities of the auditorium. It's not like we haven't had this discussion already. We did that, right here. Funding to be split between operation and maintenance, dedicated staff, program, infrastructure, improvement, and billing reserve for future sustainability. The new commission will be responsible for allocating the auditorium revenues according to the above plan, the budget established, and as approved by city council at the will of the people. For the first time, the auditorium will have its own funding stream with oversight by the community. We've already done this before, we even, we haven't done the plan, but we have laid the groundwork in this, in here, before this has even come up.
All right, let's wrap this up. I mean, we can-
That's not the argument. The argument is the CAPC's responsibility and accountability based on statute, based on ordinance, and what is the CAPC gonna do and continue to do for the auditorium, and put it out there for the citizens of this town when the vote comes to protect that 1% tax, period.
All right, Mickey.
Okay, we'll wrap up. Okay, the three of us, Jerry Butch and me, have all been here 40-plus years. The auditorium was always being used. We had the Eureka Theater, that did plays, what, three or four times a year? We had stuff going on with kids. Back when my kids were in school, they had, was it roller skating rink downstairs? It was roller skating. I mean, we did all kinds of stuff. And even back then, tickets like for the Eureka Theater thing was like seven bucks, whatever. Do either of you, because I do not, do either of you remember who was in charge, who did the organizing, how things were paid for? And if you don't remember any better than I do, because it's been a long time, would it behoove us to get somebody to look into the history? Because that auditorium was always open and always being used. And if it's something viable, that we could reinstitute, so to speak? I mean, I know we had a lot of volunteerism going on, but this was, it was a regular, steady thing. But I cannot for the life of me remember who was in charge, how or why. So is this something we should have someone looking at the history?
Basically, with CAPC, I think that's when Lynn was the director, because she was down at the auditorium-
Okay, when it was A&amp;P, wasn't, because this was going on long before we developed the CAPC.
CAPC's been here since 1970.
Seventy-two or something like that.
No, 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 no. A&amp;B, I got here in '74, March 1st, '74, and that's when, oh, what's his face?
They already had it, but yeah.
That was A&amp;P. We had it designed years later, several years later. But if Lynn can remember, that would be good.
All right, anything else?
Should we tell someone to look into it?
We'll follow up on where we're going here.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready to move on to another subject. I think we've worn this out. I think we pretty much know, and we're still on track with the CAPC coming up with the plans for the-
So we're gonna leave it as a request, not a motion? Again?
We'll still keep that on the agenda, for next month, because it is an important item. I'm not saying that it's not. But that does bring us up to discussions, application for commissions from Mr. Thomas and Mr. Mitchell.
I seconded you, Scott. Oh, second, second, I'm sorry.
Your name's on first, but doesn't ever have to discuss-
You're first, yeah.
I'm not concerned about the difference between how cemetery commission nominees are made and CAPC nominees are made. What I am concerned about is how they are handled at this table. And that's, and I think that there should be, in terms of the city council voting on an applicant for a position, there should be at least a one-year moratorium, but you cannot apply again within one year for the same commission, same seat, same applicant, even if you do it on a different piece of paper.
Mr. DeVito?
We are so bereft in applications to sit on our commission, I'm just grateful that anybody steps forward to do it. If we had people lined up out the door to apply for these commissions, I might entertain that thought, but we can't even fill our commissions, let alone put a one-year restriction on whether they reapply or not.
I am concerned about if there are people who are interested in serving on commissions, having the same people serve over and over and over without allowing someone who is interested in serving on that commission an opportunity to do so. And so I would like to see if someone has filled a full term on a commission that someone new have an opportunity to be appointed to that commission.
We, the question comes up basically because of the CAPC operates a little bit different. We always submit the applications when there's people who have, we don't have a lot of backlog, as Mr. DeVito mentioned, of new applicants for the planning commission, or the HDC, or the cemetery. We've gotta almost drag people off the streets to get them to fill out an application. And we don't have a backlog of too many applications for the other commissions. So they do tend to stay on there for a while. You know, and it's just a matter of, a lot of times, too, the people, especially with the both planning commission and HDC, they have a certain amount of knowledge, they go to classes, they go to seminars, so they have a certain amount of education that they have put into those years. So when you get somebody new, it's also going back into redoing it. But I don't know of anything that we have, I don't even know any city that says they can only serve for X amount of terms, and then you have, you know, linked the terms, so many terms you can serve. I mean, that's the only way I know of getting rid of those people, getting them off. I don't know what the right word is. Mickey?
Okay, out of five commissions, we're on the plus side, James. We've got three that are totally full, only two that have one vacancy each. I think that's the best I've ever seen it in my 40-plus years. I mean, that's really awesome. Now, several years ago, we set it up, we did some law changing, so two of us from council could actually sit on planning if and when needed, and that's usually me. Did we have a second commission? Yeah, we did that, too, or is it only planning? I know we talked about-
Cemetery.
Bob's on cemetery.
Cemetery? Okay, that's what it is.
And we started having vacancy on cemetery.
Well, that's new, though, that vacancy. Isn't that only like a month new?
About four, five months.
Okay, that long, okay. I thought that had been filled. Anyway, point being, that seems to be working out nicely. What strikes me is when people know they've got us to fill in, they tend to step forward. And I don't know why that is, but that's what started happening as soon as we made that change. Maybe we should do it with the other seats.
James?
I tend to draw the analogy to term limits on Congress. And, you know, you can term limit them every time you go to the voting booth, but we don't need a, we don't need a mechanism whereby we lose our ability to vote. If we don't want them on the commission, we vote them off. But if they're the most qualified, knowledgeable person that's ever served on that commission, you're gonna throw them off because of some rule we passed? It's not unlike limiting the terms of congressmen. I can limit them every time I go to the voting booth. I don't need this mechanism that inhibits my ability to choose who I want.
I just think we're getting two different issues here. My motion, or, you know, the discussion is for the applicant who comes to the table and is rejected by city council not being able to apply again for six months, one year, whatever. There is a reason, we're not rejecting people every other meeting. There's a reason when someone is rejected, and I don't think they should be able to come back in two weeks and apply again.
James?
So we have this discussion in December, we vote to turn somebody down, a whole new council comes in, yet you have inhibited that new council's ability to appoint who they want to serve on that commission.
So then we could write it up so that it ends whenever the council term ends. That's fine with me.
I think we can address it without having an ordinance to do it. We can just say, no, we don't want, we don't, you brought me back here a second time, we don't want you a second time.
Look at all the time we keep wasting. Why?
What, two minutes?
It was 35 minutes tonight-
Mickey, hold on, hold on, just a moment.
For a repeat performance.
All right. So are we through, I mean, I'm not sure where we're on with this discussion.
Make a motion.
Well, I mean, at this point, I would make a motion that we, for all commissions, the policy would be that-
Can't be the CAPC. Can't be the CAPC.
For our vote, for coming back to the table here.
Why can't it be?
Yes, it can.
You are not able to legislate the CAPC. That's state law.
I'm not trying to. I'm just-
Approval of the nominations placed by the governing body, it's right there in statute.
You're saying that we cannot render another application. We can render another application, as we did tonight.
So we don't have to vote on it?
Excuse me?
Well, I'm-
Go to the lawyer on that.
Yeah. Reverse to the city attorney. Is that a legitimate motion?
Actually, what he's proposing would have to be a rule that the council won't take a vote, because you as mayor have the right to appoint or bring forth any appointee you so choose, and reject any appointee that you so choose, except the CAPC. For all the other commissions, except the CAPC. The CAPC has the right to bring forth anyone they wish to. So you can only cap the vote, you cannot cap them from being brought back and put to the table.
So we could have a limit on voting on a particular applicant?
Yes, applicants in general.
I think what Mr. Weaver's saying is no. Is that-
No.
Well, they, the way they would do it is they basically would never put anybody up for a vote. You lay them out on the table, say, here's my nominee, they'd never take a vote. But if they, as far as coming up with a rule, it'd be very difficult for you to do.
Table and workup.
I think this can be addressed, or your concerns can be addressed on a case-by-case basis by doing what we did tonight, and that is suspending consideration for a period of time.
Mr. McLeod?
The problem with that is, is that you may have somebody, you may have somebody that's deceased, that's emptying a seat, or the person may not wanna serve any longer. And what you do is, when you do that, whoever is sitting in that position stays in there until they're replaced. And so if they're willing to, they may not be willing to, they may not be able to.
May not be qualified.
Well, I mean, qualified, that's real iffy anyway, you know. You know, most of us are novices at best when we step in to serve it on any of these commissions, you know. And I have to concur with James again in that volunteers for these commissions, I know I hate it, too, the volunteers for these commissions are few and far between. You know, we're running pretty good right now, but that's a rarity for all of them.
It's a whistle and touch wood.
So.
Look at city council, we have one contested position, just one.
And that's rare, isn't it?
I just hate to inhibit our ability to function. And another law that inhibits us to vote the way we wanna vote, I just can't be in favor of that, I'm sorry.
But Christie's point is really good, letting other outsiders come in and learn, and be a part of.
That's a different- That's a different issue.
So, I forgot what the motion was. I hate to say it. Do we have one?
No, we're just discussing the application for commission seats. That's all we do. And we have two separate issues.
I don't think I can make the motion because these will be illegal. So, I guess I have to withhold the motion.
There was no second anyway, was there?
He didn't do a motion yet.
But we didn't have a second yet, so, okay. I understand.
All right. And I'm going to move on to get a motion for the Second Quarter Financial Report to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Second Quarter. The receipts, money that came in, the disbursements by department, which is very interesting, if anybody wants to look at that. The bank balances, that answers the question about the reserves. The bonds and debt service, which is a compressed version of the blue book that I used to bring up here, and payroll for the first six months. And new information. It goes to the service every time someone comes and looks at this, so please don't hesitate to dive into the details.
Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's see, second, somewhere into here, I've got a... Need to get a motion to... For our annual ordinance for real and personal property tax.
Second.
This is an ordinance that we do every year. It's an annual ordinance. It's not an increase in any taxes or levying anything. It's just reaffirming what we have or it existing on the books. Mr. Mitchell?
I'll make a motion to assign ordinance a number and read it for its first reading.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved.
The ordinance number will be 2248. An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. It ordained by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas that. Section 1, levy on personal property. A tax of 4.4 mils on the dollar is hereby levied on all personal property situated within the city limits... City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the following purposes. General fund, .0038 mils. Number 2, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, .006 mils. Section 2, levy on real property, as in real estate. A tax on 4.4 mils on the dollar is hereby levied on all real property situated within corporate limits of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the following purposes. 1, general fund, .0038 mils. 2, Fireman's Relief and Pension Fund, .0006 mils. Section 3, collections. The 4.4 mils above levied on personal property are to be collected at the regular collection of taxes by the collector of Carroll County, Arkansas at the same time and in the same manner that state and county taxes are collected in the year 2017. The 4.4 mils above levied on real property are to be collected at the regular collection of taxes by the collector of Carroll County, Arkansas at the same time and in the same manner that state and county taxes are collected in the year 2017.
Mr. DeVito?
To approve ordinance 2248 on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Mr. DeVito?
To suspend the rules in place, ordinance 2248 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
6-0. The... Let's see, ordinance number 2248. An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. DeVito?
To approve ordinance number 2248 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Want the third one?
It's not...
Well, we're not going to... We don't have to read the emergency clause.
There is one.
And what's the point?
We still need a third reading.
Yes, I'm just saying that there's plenty of time.
We got plenty of time?
Well, okay.
I'm not saying...
I make a motion, we go ahead and suspend the rules and place ordinance 2248 on its third reading.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I just...
By title only, yes.
Yeah, I just would like to know why we should... Why do you think we should do that?
Well, I... It's not going to imply the emergency clause. It's still going to take...
And why do it?
It's nothing different than what we've done for the last umpteen years. Why not do it?
Because I haven't been here for umpteen years.
Have a little blind faith there, Bobby.
I just think it would be better to wait and do it in two weeks.
If there's no rush, yeah, I see, why not?
Yeah, they are taking back.
All right, motion been received, sented. All right. Because of Mr. Thomas's concerns. All right. That brings us to our next issue, and that's a resolution for authorizing acceptance of a Western Arkansas Planning and Development District grant. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss. I'll make a motion to assign this resolution a number and place it and pass it on reading.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
That passes for discussion.
All right. Let me... This motion, our police department has received a grant of $10,000 to purchase 10...
Machine guns?
Ballistic vests. Yeah. For the police department. We have several, and a lot of them are very old and outdated. And...
100%?
And there is no matching to this. This is 100% of grant from the Western District Planning Area. Any money will purchase the vest. If we don't spend the entire $10,000, if it's $9,587, we'll refund the balance of that money to them. We will not spend over $10,000 either. So, that's what this resolution is for. It's a maximum $10,000 for purchasing the vest. And I think our estimate is roughly $9,500 or something for them.
How are we purchasing this? It's... I'm gathering that we're not going to purchase it through competitive bids.
We don't have to put it out for bids because it's under $20,000, and I'm not sure where the police department purchased their...
But there is a source where they can purchase it.
Yeah, it's... And I'm sure it's paying place where everybody else buys their...
Yes, exactly.
Bulletproof vests.
Vests are...
Made available to all the police departments in the state.
Yeah, and it very well may be a state contract.
That's what...
Could be the same people that were getting the playground equipment from outside, by the way.
Yeah.
Same idea.
Well, I have some Kevlar playground equipment. All right, any other questions? Okay, we got a motion to read for approval, resolution number... I guess, and we need a roll call vote for that. Okay.
Yes. Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
The ordinance number will... I mean, the resolution number will be 690. A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a Western Arkansas Planning and Development District grant and expressing the willingness of the city of Eureka Springs to utilize the monies to purchase protective gear for the police department. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs has applied for and been awarded WAPDD grant monies in the amount of $10,000 for the express purpose of purchasing 10 ballistic vests for the police department. And whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs understands that this WAPDD is a 100% grant, there are no matching funds required of the city of Eureka Springs to accept and utilize this grant to purchase personal protective equipment for the police department. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas that the city mayor is hereby authorized, on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs, to accept the WAPDD grant of $10,000 for the purpose of purchasing personal protective equipment for the police department, and that the mayor is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same object.
All right. Thank you all. Next item is unfinished business, a discussion of the ordinance number 1628 that lands under the jurisdiction of the parks. So, get a motion to discuss?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ms. Kendrick, do you want to...
Well, I believe I made my presentation last time, so I am now looking for council's reaction to my proposals.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm going to be honest, Ms. Kendrick's.
Yes.
And I read it, and I don't remember my questions, to be perfectly honest. And so I'm going to just have to postpone any intelligent conversation to another time because I just don't remember.
Kim, go ahead.
I don't know what to say.
James?
I'll reiterate what a comprehensive presentation you made with attention to detail, and it's definitely something in my mind that we need to move forward on. Might I ask, Kim, do we have any workshops on our agenda in the future? Would Ms. Kendrick's be amenable to having a workshop for this topic? So, with that in mind, I would make a motion that we set a workshop. This will require a lengthy discussion, I mean, no doubt. And I think it's something we need to discuss.
Okay, did I give a second?
I'll second.
Sure.
Okay, discussion?
If, in such a workshop, would our city attorney attend that?
He could. You want to pay him for it?
I will.
All right, Bob's going to pay for it, we heard that.
It's on camera.
On camera.
If he makes as much as I did when I was teaching, I'll pay him.
I left teaching 25 years ago, 30 years ago.
I'm kind of like James, and I know Mr. McClung and I have talked about this, and there's a lot of good items in here. And I also think, even though that you mentioned the land bank committee was defunct, it's only defunct because we've never appointed any new people to it.
Another one of those committees, huh?
Well, but it's not... It started out being good, and what it did was taking and surveying all the land and putting it up basically for sale, and the things that we weren't using. And I think that was along the lines that Ms. McClung had been talking about for a long time in getting into putting it back on the tax rolls and getting it off the city. So, what I would suggest is people go back and look at the land bank, and I can make copies of this ordinance, too, for you, for us, for the workshop because I think there's some things that we can intermingle into here.
You still have the recommendations somewheres.
On the land bank?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've still got some records, and we've still got... And we can go through it at the workshop. And we really did have a good group of people went out and surveyed it.
I think it's a great... It was a great idea. I think perhaps maybe it's a bit unwieldy, but I think I do believe that...
That was the word, unwieldy. It actually functioned well.
Okay.
With that many people, we were able to go out and look at lands and bring it back. We just never progressed back to the council table with recommendations. That was a follow-through, that was a problem.
But I do believe that I made $2 million for the city of New Orleans by selling their property, so I know it can be done.
Yeah.
I've got some property...
Yeah, we got some bridges here in town.
I am serious. I have read this, and there are things there that I think we need the city attorney's opinion on.
Okay, and Ms. Jen...
I might make the suggestion that during our workshop, we generate questions that we will then pose to the city attorney.
Here at this meeting.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to do it. All right. Okay, we will set up a workshop on this issue. I think it's great, and...
There isn't a vote.
Oh, we need a vote for that motion? Take part? All right, all those in favor of the workshop, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Now, the madam clerk is happy also. She's happy, I'm happy. All right, that brings us down to agenda setting. Ms. Schneider?
Are we not supposed to be having a follow... A final follow-up workshop on food trucks and then bringing it to council?
I can address that in my comments. I will address that in my comments, okay.
Okay. And also, Bob Purvis was the name I was trying to think of for AMP or whatever we had. Bob, was that Chamber or was it AMP?
Both.
That was the problem, that was most... That was the 1972 thing, yeah. All right, anybody else got agendas? All right, City Council comments. Bob?
Yep.
Mr. McClung?
I just want to make sure, I mean, it's... That I don't know if City Hall is closed. Our next meeting date is Columbus Day. I mean, that's fine with me. I tend to be here.
Good.
That's an Italian holiday, I get it off.
Yeah. James is personal holiday, he'll be here.
Good.
So, are we meeting on Columbus Day?
Yeah, we'll be meeting.
It's good for Chris, it's good for the country, yeah.
All right, David?
No, just tonight is the first presidential debate. Starts here in a little bit, and I understood that the Carnegie Library's having a debate thing going on if you don't have a watch or something, and you're supposed to bring snacks. So, if you want to go down there and hoot and holler and scream, there...
And cuss.
In the annals, yes, in the Carnegie.
All right, sir.
No guns allowed.
I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider, did you say you didn't?
Um, no, I didn't say anything. I'm slowly healing. I'm glad I can move again. Crashes suck. Go ahead, I'm done.
Ms. Kendrick?
I have no comments.
All right. The comment was about food trucks. I sent off... I want to thank the city clerk and Bob for putting together a ordinance. I added a few items on there and sent it off to the city attorney today and asked if he could get that back to us as soon as possible. And when I get it back, I will distribute it to the council and try to set up a workshop for us to discuss at that point.
So, next meeting, we should add something?
If not before.
Okay.
Yeah. One way or the other, we'll either have... You know, I don't know whether we'll get workshop before or we'll just have it and decide to have workshop at the council meeting. But it's in... Now I can pass it off on the city attorney.
Get cracking.
The clerk and Bob did a great job of putting together the recommendations and stuff. I thank you. There are some odds and ends here. Also, I want to thank James and Terry Contrary. I know David, Mr. Mitchell feels that the CAPC was sloughing off, but I also know that, you know, for Mr. DeVito to jump on the CAPC with his proposal immediately may not have caught them off guard, but it's something that's not going to be able to just be happening immediately. But I know that they feel the pressure and the importance that we have of establishing the support of the CAPC toward the auditorium. Mr. McClung stressed it, and I've stated before, you know, the auditorium has been treated like a stepchild for years and years and years. And we really thought by adding what we've had two... had two committees come up with the same recommendation of forming a commission, but a commission is only going to be viable if it has a steady revenue stream. And I thought, and I think the council believed, that we've always heard from the citizens how they need things going on in the auditorium. And the CAPC may not have been reactive to their suggestions, and we felt that this was the best way to get that back into service and get things going on in the auditorium. And I'm real excited to see that the CAPC is going to commit that funds for the auditorium into programming. My understanding that it was going to go into programming, not in... And so they still have got a gentleman down there that's going to be partly responsible for the sound, because he's also responsible for the sound and everything in the Basin Park. So that's something that's still going to be contributed into that proposal, I'm hoping, in my understanding. But I'm excited to see that CAPC committing to helping us promote the auditorium, and especially committing money for programming. Hopefully, it'll give us another venue to bring more people into town. The CAPC's done a great job this year. Last month, we just got ourselves tax figures. I don't know if the council received those yet. We were over 20% for July. That's great. I'm not sure what our CAPC tax increase was, but overall, we're still running about 6% over last year, which was better than the years before. So CAPC, at least in my opinion, from what its appearance, is doing a good job with their tax revenues in advertising. And I understand a lot of people's frustration with taking the money, or the frustration with the CAPC not promoting the auditorium and paying $100,000 for, you know, big-name groups to come in, because we did lose money. I don't... I think we also have a disease in town of short-term memory. We forget how much money it costs and how much money we lost, or the CAPC lost. And the decision was made to spend the money into advertising rather than programming. But now we've got an opportunity to be able to do both and make the auditorium even better and bring it back to the way it was. And I hope the citizens will recognize this is a commission, and the tax money, that 25% of a penny, will go toward the auditorium. It's not going to go into the CAPC funds. It's going into the auditorium for their use and for betterment of that facility, with the help of the CAPC's programming funds, so we can have a great time. I guess that's kind of to get off my bailiwick, but I was reminded, too, of part of the problems when we had roller skating down there. We probably did about $50,000 worth of damage to the floors. And you can literally see holes in the floor down to the creek from the roller skates. You know, so, you know, good news, bad news. We tried to do something, and then we didn't. Our solution to fix it was putting plywood over the floors, you know, instead of putting, fixing the floors. Because that was a basketball court at one time. It wasn't a roller skating rink, it was a basketball court. But, you know, I think we've got a still a good opportunity, and I hope the citizens realize, you know, what we're trying to do is allow our visitors to help us pay for our infrastructure, help us pay for the auditorium, help us provide the entertainment for them and for our locals into here. So that's all I have, I guess, for right now. Oh, no, I do have a better... The most important thing, too, is speaking of upcoming events and the auditorium, we have our own Grammy Award winner, John Twohaw's concert will be September 30th at 7:00 PM in the odd. And then October 1st, we have the Psalms Prophet Band from 2:00 to 4:00 in the Basin Park Band Shell. And then, following that, this is going to be an interesting day in the park. After the Psalms Prophet Band, we'll have drumming in the park. So if you don't like the Psalms Prophet, stick around for the drumming. And then, if you don't like any of that, go to the auditorium that night and see Andy Gross and his mind-boggling magician show, which should be real exciting. He's a great magician, and I think we're pretty lucky to have that. And I hope a lot of people show up to see that show. And then on October 8th, we'll have the second Saturday music in the park from 5:00 to 7:00. With the same time, we'll have the second gallery, second Saturday gallery show, with a gallery, art galleries in and around downtown area.
But isn't it Brewer &amp; Shipley?
Huh?
Is it Brewer &amp; Shipley?
No.
Second Saturday? No?
I may...
I think so.
I think it's Brewer &amp; Shipley.
Brewer &amp; Shipley?
By the way.
Yes, by the way, I missed that one. Okay. Yeah, thank you. And then also the Corvette Parade, which starts at 7:00 PM, folks, so we don't have to worry about that. It's on the 8th. We'll have the second Saturday show, Brewer &amp; Shipley, the gallery, the music. So that's a great, great weekend. So that's all I have.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.